My name is Maria Sergiaca and I just had a comment on all the extensive work that was done to help reach the community. I have a grandmother living in the community, I have uncles and my parents, my friends, I work in the community. Nothing, nothing. I really have never heard of this until somebody got a letter from downtown saying they're sick here. One person said, "Call the people and add them to this community." My parents, my grandparents, they've been here for over 40 years. So I don't understand what this, how we do it this. If the people, if the people know, if they happen. So if you're gonna say, "We're doing this, let the people know." Actually, let the people know. Don't just tell them, "But we don't know where all the paperwork provided." It's essential to ask, ask the community. Oh yeah, you know, why don't you tell them, "We can find the paperwork?" And they're gonna say, "Yeah, I'm sorry, it can't be..." It's not okay, because we live here, we want to know what's going on, because it affects all of us.
Thank you. We're gonna give you guys an answer to the question, please, and then we'll go further. Thank you. Rosalinda? Rosalinda Meyer? No.
I have a question regarding my time. It has to be a public comment, I'm sorry. If I don't use up my entire minute, can I miss another minute till another speaker? Like I mentioned, my name is Beth White. I am a resident of the community. I'm here as a parent advocating for my two school-aged children who attend the local schools. And I think it's a shame that since I'm not in Mount Washington or in Silver Lake, unfortunately cannot afford to live in there. My hillside is a risk. My hillside is but for the change in city ordinance, the change of zoning, because again, I cannot afford to live in Mount Washington or in Silver Lake. It isn't fair that my children aren't allowed to keep what brought us into the community, the hillside, the birds. Same hot smell right having to do with the priorities doing back there sometimes. But again, it is unfair that because of the fact that we are not as affluent in the first place as the other communities, or maybe we're not seen that way, that people assume that we will tell them we're informed, but unfortunately, we were not informed. Because my concern is the traffic, the impact that's going to have on my children and on their safety.
Thank you. Rosalinda Cornejo. Adriana Garcia.
My name is Josefina Correia. I belong to this community. Living here for 33 years. And I haven't seen any change in this community. I'm for this new development. We need schools, we need new homes. I think that we need, that we need a change. And that...
Thank you. Tracy Loya. Tracy Loya. Jimmy Katz. Followed by Paul Desmanis. Manis? Paul? You wanna speak? And Aurora Perez. Aurora Perez, you're next.
I'm a 41-year-old resident of El Cerrino. And there's actually two reasons why I'm here. One is because this is the first that I've heard of this project. And I was greatly concerned, because I believe that, just like the gentleman forestated, as far as the rezoning. I believe that development is not taking too tough the community in regards to senior citizens and the children that are in that general area. I believe that the traffic issues are gonna be a safety hazard. And in the future, once this development, if it is, if it does go into fruition, will cause a major traffic gridlock, which already exists in the area. The park, a lot of senior citizens go there for exercise, even I myself am aging. I myself see the traffic issues that are there. And I'm concerned about the development in regards to how that'll affect the community. I hope you all... Thank you for that.
Bill Chrisley. Bill Chrisley. You wanna speak? David Patel. David Patel, come on. Followed by Carmen Melendez. Melendez. Carmen?
Hello. I'm here dead now, like on the New York Drive, 1978. I'm an artist, a local artist that I work in the community. And there's one within your view right now. I am, take it as an artist's point of view. Well, first of all, I wanna say, please come up and read these names of the people that aren't here today. There's no corona here. They don't think it's important enough to be here to make a decision. And thank you all for being here. So I'm gonna take pictures of these people that aren't here. It's real now. I'm worried that we're floating in and off the internet on the El Cerrino Historical Society site. So the last big hilltop review was the Phil Wilson High School. Right down here. Right here, they wanna take another hill away. Carmen Melendez.
I also live in the community. I'm not against change, but I do want, instead of apartments, I think larger ones, to be more for homes, for people to own their own, not condos. Have homes with yards for the children. Now, for schools, I'm hiring the schools that we have. My kids who went there, they did what, they did what. Second, third, um, traffic. The communities will get there. Traffic is gonna get, more traffic. But everything else is gonna stay like emergency response systems stay the same. That means everybody in danger. Third above. For, you know, it says here, and you think that we did this, and we didn't make it. It says rental, not ownership. And you guys did this. Now, with all your respect, as a community member, they shouldn't have lost those funds. They should stay. Somebody should pay.
Thank you, Carmen. Lisa.
Can you hear me?
Sure, definitely.
Okay, so I just wanted to point something out. So the developer's fault. You used this line, nothing to talk about it without the majority of the public. That's cool, but is the developer's why or this global data impact that the community is trying to go through? I don't think so.
Lucy, do me a favor, can you please? I'm in the district.
So let me start off with a point. When the developer here has spoken, spent half the time talking about himself, where he grew, that's really not important. What is important, where you live now, that's much more important. And the other half talked about the project, that's fine, but you said nothing about the negative impact on the community. Negative impacts such as traffic congestion, dramatic increase, especially during retirement. The Department of Transportation study estimates 1,363 more trips by the average citizen in this area. Safety concerns, more vehicles, more chances of accidents. A dramatic increase in gas emissions, noise pollution, light pollution. It will overburden the water and sewer system structure that was designed for residential, like commercial use. Emergency services will be stretched more than you know right now. The amount of residential street parking will decrease. Why destroy a beautiful natural habitat for construction project that is wrong fit? We insisted upon following. No zoning changes, no bare answers, no waivers. NC 32, we ask you to make a motion to oppose this development and issue a letter of planning to the planning board be sending if you give its approval. It's the wrong project.
Madam Austin. Madam Austin. Susana Salinas.
Good evening. I've been a resident of El Cerrino my life, specifically down the street from your lot on Eastern. So we are neighbors. I feel like your analysis takes into account only the two years of this building. In the information of your plans, we're allowed 155 trips for these trucks to pass by my house. I already have buses, fast cars pass me by my house, 125 trips. 250 times that these trucks filled with dirt with their exhausts pass me by my house. Your noise analysis doesn't take into account the way the noise echoes in the video. I live 500 feet away from your property, but I can hear the kids play at the park. I would hope that your analysis would take into account how loud I'm gonna hear at your construction.
You have a translator? Get someone to translate, please. Double duty. Come on, translate.
My name is Susana Salinas. And I have been taking her out for many, many years, and she has one concern. I have been told that the city is the one who's going to determine whether this project is going or not. So I would like to know what criteria we use. So we have the folks from the council office here, so maybe they're gonna... I can't remember the person, I can't remember my manager, Mr. Benegas, and answer the questions. Maybe one of you can come up and answer the questions. Susana, who else can answer that? And they did move some, if anyone's here, if they're here, they'll be able to give us a signal. How many say, "Hey, can you tell them about our project?" I'll wait.
Patricia Juarez. Patricia. Teresa Saracho de Pata.
Good afternoon, thank you. My name is Teresa Saracho de Pata. I have been a principal at Farmdale Elementary School, just directly across from the proposed development. I just have a question, apology. What research was conducted to assess the needs for schools and for housing? Because I know that even when parents that come in and looking for homes, they're not able to price for them. So we have a lot, especially with the new fiscal uncertainty. They live in two or three families, and what apartment, and so, okay. What assessment to do? Who says that to me then? This is in terms of schools, and somebody mentioned other schools. There's lots of space in other schools. Instead, I think somebody said there's not adequate room. So do you want me to start here? Okay. I was gonna say, I'm asking what research was conducted to assess that there's a need for school and housing? Because I see every day when parents are coming in to pull out the kids or bring them in. Okay, I'm gonna disagree with what you're saying. And then the second one is, what guarantee can you give us that will ensure traffic is gonna be safe? How are you mitigating that? How that was written before was a traffic light on Swiget, which never has been approved before. But it's been 15 years I've been at Farmdale. We have had way too many parents, like those two million adults and children that have been moved over by cars. And so this is only gonna be with long-term traffic.
Richard Nate Tharp. Frank Miambura. Followed by Kate Adiri. Kate?
Hi, my name is Frank Miambura. My family has lived here for possibly 15 years in El Cerrino. I would like to say I oppose this project, and I urge the board to oppose this project as well. Of the many concerns this project brings, I think the number one concern is safety. It's awfully hard to mitigate the traffic and pedestrian traffic around this area. It's already congested, as you can see on any school in the morning or the afternoon. And this project, go ahead and aggregate that and it's much worse. Now, on the straight to Eastern, I've heard some people say they're gonna go ahead and light it. I've heard that we're gonna go and save the road and put a traffic signal there. As you all know, that intersection is not a simple intersection. It's gonna take a lot of design to make it as safe as possible. It may not even be possible. Thank you very much.
Katie Hurdle. Elizabeth Felix. Elizabeth Felix. Thomas Takashira. Thomas? Crystal Flom. Crystal? Anna Rivera. You wanna speak? If you're shy, everyone can. Veronica DeTala.
I'll try to read this message again then. I first heard of this development about one of the citizens, a fellow resident friend, came to my door petitioning, doing door-to-door. I just looked at the 500-foot radius and I'm against the project for several reasons. Res zoning from residential to commercial would hurt our smart community. There are more homes than businesses on Eastern and the Barnet, and you can count the businesses in one hand. My children attend Farmdale Elementary, IB Road School. What better school to bring your children to than a charter school? You've got also in the middle school, you have Willfield. On any given day, I invite you to do your traffic survey report on the first day of school, on August 13. Start at 7:00 in the morning and stay until 5:00 in the afternoon when the real traffic hits. The proposed entrance to the charter school that is supposed to be there is greatly used by a lot of residents, a lot of parents, including myself, hold on, one more point. For illegal users, there's gonna be a lot more foot traffic. What are we gonna do about the kids? What are we gonna do about the intersection there? Thank you, and I hope that you consider our advice.
Melissa Nella. Melissa Nella. Followed by Dr. Tom Williams.
Thank you to the board members that respected the community by coming out tonight. And thank you to the council district office. And thank you to everyone who's here. You are all making fantastic points. I agree with the majority of the concerns that I'm hearing. I'm not gonna talk so much about the concerns. I am gonna say, I'm going to have to say this title tonight again, because this man isn't the person who decides. The developer is not the person who decides. And even these people are not people who decide. It's our council district friend who is not here tonight. He is a designer. And the plan and commission, they are designers. So your voice needs to get to them. Email, letters, overcalls, every key. Please do that. Also to the developer, thank you for coming tonight. If you would like to see your plans, the actual plans. I think you heard what we all thought when we saw your images. The daptics reviews, but like that building being, even charter school doesn't survive, it looks still like it could be a shopping mall. And I don't think El Cerrino is a shopping mall.
Tom Williams. 30-plus year resident of El Cerrino. 30 years ago, I came here, this is where I wanted to live, and probably don't. Okay. This particular project, wrong project, wrong place, easiest way. Now, the two city requirements are a zoning change to commercial and a variance to the hillside ordinance, because they run at the top of the hill. Okay. For the zoning, by the way, I have read through all of the files and in the planning office, look at the drawings and things like that. It wasn't the same drawings as they showed tonight. But here's the basic goal. They say that this will form a transition between the intense commercial areas north of Little Marty. It won't work. Carmen Bata. Carmen? Followed by Jade Wong. Jade Wong. Followed by Cecilia Sanchez.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Tata. What I see here is no permission of contribution. What I see here is no permission of contribution. How was it made since you go to elementary school for another elementary school? The land issues and application by Kate Martola and the builder, the lady shows that their intention is to capitalize and extracting every possible dollar by turning this location to an RAS 3-1 mixed-use block business. Furthermore, there are these potential potentially significant irreversible impacts to our quality of life. A mitigating negative declaration is inappropriate and cannot be used for this project because these impacts cannot be lessened or mitigated to any degree of satisfaction. The mitigating of any of the declarations which has been submitted does not help mitigate the impacts in correlation to the damage cost. These are irreversible damage effects. So I ask the council to make a move to make a motion to oppose the project and issue a letter of opposition to applying provision and with all the previous accord. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna take a second to thank our hallback police team, I think, for keeping the peace. I appreciate it, and sure to have another one. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jade Wong, I'm almost on my way to El Cerrino. And I live on the same block and to propose development. The site is subject to the northeast Los Angeles, those like zone change when it's created to protect against out-of-scale developments such as one proposed now. A zone change would void the protections that the city planners put in place to protect the residents in all our hillside communities. I have issues with noise pollution, traffic, safety. I have problems with parking. All of these issues are combined significant. Please, our board, please, listen to all of us and oppose this proposed construction, zone change, please. There's no need for a zone change if the plan is to gain single-family residences 15 feet in length. We need to keep zoning. Thank you.
Erado O'Sullivan.
Thank you. I just wanna say one thing. I heard this project the first time about two weeks ago. It was one of our very good teachers, and I'm with principal for project. This is the first time I heard that you said you start this project since in 2006? I don't understand, what's going wrong with you? Something is wrong. Why you hire so much for so long? Every time a board is proud, I receive from Mr. Puiza, a lot of, a lot of people. Now, nothing more happened. I'm against this project. Thank you.
Followed by Anna Marie Lissa.
Hi, good evening. I'm really opposed to this project for many reasons, but primarily for the traffic in the area. And I actually spoke to Mr. Benegas before the meeting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I asked him about the traffic. And it's already congested in the morning and also the afternoon. We acknowledged that that area is used for, as a path for commuters from Pasadena into downtown and to catch highways. Also, he said that that could be mitigated by school beginning an hour before or an hour later. So I think I'm getting it wrong, I heard wrong, but that's what I said to him. Hour before, hour later, we blocked the traffic. Thank you.
Repeat, hold it, please.
Hello, my name is Anna Marie. I've lived here actually for 50 years, since I was a toddler. I live on the morning, right across, literally across from the proposed café. I learned about this project last year when I attended the meeting at the senior center when I met Mr. Benegas. And the way I found about it is his daughter came to my door and said, "Hi, we're having this meeting." I lived there so long that I remember the Chicken Delight that was on that corner. That's how long I've lived here. Junior high was a high school and a, junior high and a high school. I went to Farmdale, and a two-story building that was the biggest thing in the area. And that was in Riverside, you can, oh my goodness, it's a big building. I remember when Art Snag used to go up and down Eastern during meetings and all the projects. Someone said there was no change. Yes, there's been change. If I remember correctly, Eastern has already been realigned for that same project. And I understand what your transportation person said, but I live, let me quick this back. I live right where, I can't mind driving before 8:00 in the morning. Otherwise, I'm stuck in traffic because I really want everything to be Farmdale. So yes, I understand that, and I thank you sir for letting me talk. But it's traffic, and I have so many accidents on that street, it is funny.
Yacena Chanu. Claudia Martínez.
Hi, I just wanna make one point, that just because we're building a new school doesn't mean it's gonna be better than the schools that we already have.
Hi, my name is Claudia, I live in San Francisco. I live in, my traffic comes from the preschool, San Jose, on the, El Sabino. I take my son to El Sabino. I do have to leave it out by the way that it's 12:00, 13:00. I don't have to be to get my son, just call in time if I need to go to work. Have ever been stuck, and this is for the developer. If everyone in the morning have ever been stuck. If a traffic gets a heavy engine, if it's open traffic, just to get out from El Sabino to the school. And this is not even true. It took me 40 minutes. And this is because I know that it's true, it's everything. And this is because I know the limits of this street, I'm staying with it. And that still passed me twenty minutes to go, right, um, right to get to it. So you talk about traffic, you talk about pollution, if you ever come to the park, that is a mistake, so it's all this pollution. But I think that kids are really, really, uh, self-constraining, and then I don't know what else, do the seventeen freeway, that's, uh, you have to. So, um, I urge you to consider, um, and it's for, not, not to the, the government.
Hello, everyone, I'm a long-time Asbury resident, I've been in Asbury all my life, and it costs it, and I really know about this project, about, um, if Mr. Benegas said to me, you have reached, he's been in the unit for sixteen years, well, I haven't, I just recently come down, sorry. Now, I have a question to the, I think, to the council members, I want to know if there's no forum to take a position, I want to know if you can play it on your agenda for the next meeting, is that possible? I don't want this word. Who do I ask?
Loretta. Followed by Olivia Sevula.
Good evening, my name is Loretta Valverde, and this is, I am, for the first time in my life, I am involved with Land of the Land, and I just moved into Asena. I chose to be a homeowner, and I bought here in Asena. And one of the reasons why I bought here, or what? Were you a citizen?
I am.
And the, one of the, the first reason why I bought here is because of you. I wanted to be part of a community. I wanted to buy, I wanted to be a homeowner, I wanted to be involved, and I chose this community, Asena. Asena for me, it means hillside, it means view.